Why not? That's how it goes.
Okay, so we got 5:30. Call the main order. Craig's gonna lead us in the hutch. Craig Scott.
Here.
Mark Serbrook.
Here.
Ron Vaughn.
Present.
Brad Newbecker.
Present.
Danny David.
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I just, I'd like to, when you get to the correspondence, Brad, there's one of those correspondence I'd like to talk about.
Any other additions or corrections?
I'll make a motion to pass it. To accept you to accept the.
Agenda is presented. I will support your motion.
A motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three A, review of the minutes, September ninth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting minutes.
I've looked over the minutes and I'll make a motion to accept them as presented. I'll support that.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Vaughn.
Scott.
So I did write Serbrook. That was support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve this. To approve the September ninth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting minutes. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three B, September ninth, twenty twenty-one, closed session meeting minutes.
I looked it over, submitted mine. I'll make a motion to accept them.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve the September ninth, twenty twenty-one, closed session meeting minutes. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? So you're not on mute. Three C, September sixteen, twenty twenty-one, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
We haven't made right.
Those, I don't know who it is. I'll make a motion that we accept them as presented.
Commissioner Vaughn, does anyone support that?
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioners Vaughn with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve the September sixteen, twenty twenty, twenty-one, committee of the whole meeting minutes. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item four, public comment on agenda, item matters. I'm gonna read this once, and this will apply for both, so we're gonna do that, okay? Okay, item four, public comment on agenda, item matters. This is the first of two opportunities for public comment. On December tenth, twenty twenty, the Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty-seven to adopt rules of procedure that include a structure for public comment. The public comment period is limited to topics that appear on the meeting agenda. A second public comment period appears later in the agenda, at which time public statements will be accepted on any manner or issue that is relevant or germane to county government. Persons who wish to address the board are required to comply with the following. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Board rules do not impose restrictions on subject matter. However fair to follow the direction of the chairperson will result in not being able to talk or being removed from the meeting. The board chairperson reserves the right to sound the gavel when the audience applauds or derides a speaker on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. We think in advance for your compliance with these rules. Is there any public comment? Any public comment in the room?
I have some comments regarding the agenda, item eight A, fiscal twenty-two budget. At last week's committee, the whole meeting, there was some discussion regarding approving that budget. And there were some comments made by Commissioners regarding the road patrol millage that I feel need to be addressed. One comment was that, quote, we're getting half of what we're paying for. We're getting a day patrol and a patrol is half the twenty-four hours. My response to that is that we already had a day patrol before passing the twenty-four hour road patrol. We've always had. So the day patrol was funded by the taxes we were already paying up to the general fund. And that tax didn't go down after passing the road patrol. The second comment that was made was that the purpose behind the twenty-four, twenty-four hour road patrol millage was to take the funding of the road patrol, the burden of that off the general fund. And while that may have been the intention of some, that's not what was portrayed to voters when support was being sought to pass that millage. What was sold to the voters is that the village would bring back night patrol. And that's why voters supported. We already had a day patrol. Voters would not have supported a new millage for the service that we were already paying taxes. The wording of the millage was, and I quote, "to enhance countywide twenty-four hour road patrol services through the Oghumaw County Sheriff's Office." And we haven't had either one. We have had twenty-four hour road patrol and we have not had any enhancement of road patrol services from the sheriff's office. Nothing related to road patrol has been enhanced. So simply put, we're paying more taxes for the exact same service that we were already getting. So I strongly encourage you to do the right thing, not collect the twenty-four hour road patrol millage in the fiscal twenty-two budget.
Any other public comment in the room?
Fred Simmons, I'm from Westbridge Township. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
It was hard to hear the other guy. In reference to road patrol millage for night patrol, we do not have it. And, and I did move that millage because I assumed we were gonna have night patrol. And we don't have night patrol yet, and we've already collected taxes for night patrol. And I would say, if you're gonna collect taxes for night patrol this year, then it should be like a quarter of a mil instead of a whole mil. Because I don't know what, what's been done with night patrol. I don't know if equipment's been bought. I don't know if people have been hired and where I'm at school. All I know is that we paid a millage. Don't have anything yet. We collect a quarter of a mil. Maybe to cover the expenses that have already been spent on night patrol or equipment or whatever. But don't keep taking my tax dollars for a service I'm not getting. Now, once it, and we haven't had it for a whole year now, since the millage passed. So you already have the money there for night patrol. So don't collect to me, again, for a service we don't have, but a service that you provided.
Thank you. Any other public comment? In the room? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Item five, we have correspondence. We have correspondence from Muskegon County related to resolution to promote general welfare. Rest common county related to opposition to legislative changes to mental health system. And Tuscola County related to the Opens Meeting Act exemption. Commissioner Scott, did you want to?
Yeah, I wanted to address Tuscola County. They're, they're asking, they're asking their state reps and state senators to, to, to exempt counties under a seventy-five thousand dollar, seventy-five thousand population for the portion of Public Act two fifty-four, which has to do with being able for the, the county board to vote at participate in meetings and vote via electronically, like Zoom. I think this has worked out pretty well because we're under this emergency act right now. And it, it does, so far it does expire at the end of the year. I'd like to see it keep going. I, for sure, I hope that the rest of the Commissioners want to keep the Zoom part of our meetings going. But I think this, this goes to, to that the members can participate in. Well, I think we've all gone out of town one time or another and wanted to participate in the meeting. And after January one, we'll, we'll be able to listen in and talk, but not vote. And I think that they're doing the right thing. And I think that us as a board should have a resolution that says the same thing and put it toward our elected officials.
Comments?
I would concur with Commissioner Scott's thoughts. I think it's been beneficial to allow members of the Board of Commissioners to be able to vote electronically via Zoom or whatever format would happen to be able to use. I certainly think it's been a plus.
I, I think it has its benefits. I think you should be able to listen. I, I, I don't agree with the voting aspect as far as continuing after January one. I think when you decide to run for office and when you take office, with that comes a pretty significant commitment. In, in hearing stuff by Zoom is not always, you miss words, you miss conversations, you're not getting everything. I agree with continuing to be able to listen, but I don't agree with continuing to be able to vote. I agree with you, there are times that we all have missed. But I think the majority of meetings individuals should be able to make. So that's my opinion.
I, I agree with that. I think that it served its purpose for the time being. But what kind of a precedent are we setting here? Does this allow an elected official to basically not show up to any meetings going forward? And just basically show up electronically to vote? I think that the voters deserve to see their representative, at least on camera, in the room and the seat that they voted them to be in. And, you know, for a committee or for something like that, that's one thing. But for, for our board meetings that are only really two main meetings a month and then two committee of the whole meetings a month. I, I don't think it's that big a deal to come in here and represent your, your community. And it's I just, I just don't feel comfortable with that.
I, I very much agree with Mr. Scott. I, I would like to see it continue. I very much like the Zoom so that people can get on and see what's going on at these meetings. I also see your side as far as I don't want everybody to say, okay, well, we're just gonna Zoom in and, and all of us be Zooming in every meeting neither, you know, that's.
I'm not saying they can't, they can't still watch us on Zoom, I'm just saying.
Right. No, I understand that.
And I agree with Commissioners participating if you guys are out of time, town. But I don't agree with continuing to have an ability to vote. And it is, that means you can still participate in committee of the whole meetings. That means it is still just two meetings a month that you have, you have made a commitment. And don't get me wrong, things happen, but you've made a commitment when you decided to take this office. And, and I, I, I think people need to show up. I think they need to be present. So I don't think unless something significantly shifts with this, where we currently are. I agree with continuing with Zoom, continue. But as far as if the Commissioner is on that Zoom, should not have the ability, in my personal opinion, to be able to vote.
And I think that, I think everybody on this board is pretty responsible. We show up to meetings, but we could get a member on this board at some point in time that decides, you know what, I don't want to show up.
You're absolutely right. I don't disagree with that thought process at all.
I think that, you know.
I think.
The thing is, the thing is, is in order to get just a Zoom, you'll have to get the state to change that. Okay, the legislature or the governor or whatever. And then a board can make its own rules. Okay, the board could say, you're allowed to do this three meetings a year or something like that. The way it is right now, the only exemption is if you're absent due to military duty. If one of us were in the hospital, well, unconscious, you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to be, chime in and vote because the state doesn't allow that.
If you chime in, you just wouldn't be able to vote.
Right, right. So I, I think you can, I think, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the, the board would have power to go ahead and pass rules that, that are more so than the state. Not, you just can't go less than the state.
Right, and in a case like this, though, could it worst-case scenario, if you have a Commissioner that simply doesn't want to be here, continues to participate on Zoom, but does so in a manner that's not consistent with board rules, but is consistent with state statute? The question then is, what authority does the board have to enforce its rules? In other words, what are you gonna do? And I don't think there's much you could do because of the statute if it were.
We'll have Jenny call him, scold him.
Yeah.
That'd be enough, right there.
Yeah, and being able to prove why they're not here could be a costly event as well.
Thing is with Zoom, you know, if, if they're on camera at home, say, or someplace else, then anybody can watch them too. They can, they can access Zoom. So, you know, I mean, it's the twenty-first century, let's use the.
Can we put this on the committee of the whole for the next meeting so we make a decision tonight? I don't disagree with you, Craig, but however, when you're, when you're, when you're placing a vote, you need to make sure that you have all the facts. And I, I've been on the other end of that camera and you don't get all the, the verbiage. You don't get all the body language. You don't necessarily hear or understand everything that's taking place, which I feel when you're placing a vote, you should have as much knowledge and information as possible going forward with that vote.
If you don't mind putting it on the committee floor, I'll wait.
Okay, is that it on that? Those were received and filed. Item six, action on consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of those new business agenda items that the Board of Commissioners determines to be routine before putting the question to the Commissioners. The chairperson shall permit Commissioners to remove from the consent calendar those items on which, which they have questions or wish to debate.
I think for the weight of what we have tonight, I think we should take them individually.
Okay, sure. Well, item seven A, resolution to adopt medical benefits contribution limit consistent with the publicly, oh my gosh, funded health insurance contribution act. Sir?
Okay, what this is, is a resolution that you should see annually, consistent with the statute known as P one fifty-two that was adopted ten years ago. The board can, cannot pay one hundred percent of the health benefits for its employees unless it exempts itself from the statute by two-thirds of both. The other options are, first option being a hard cap. This is a limit on health insurance or healthcare benefit costs that is determined annually by the state. What Department of Treasury does is, it started with a hard cap number back in twenty-eleven and gradually increased that based on the rate of inflation and some other formulas that they use in Lansing. And so, and literally the state sets what the cap is on what the county can pay for health benefits for employees. The other option is what we refer to as the eighty-twenty option. And that's where the county would pay eighty percent benefit and the employee would pay out of check, usually through payroll deduction, twenty percent of the benefit cost. The resolution in front of the board tonight would adopt the hard cap model. And for reasons that we'll discuss in the next item, this is a model that we believe works best for both the county and the employees.
Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
I wanted that out there.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Make the motion that the resolution be adopted as presented.
It's a second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Scott to approve the resolution to adopt medical benefit contribution limit consistent with the publicly funded health insurance contribution act. Any further discussion? Will Cobalt?
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Item seven B, resolution to approve medical benefit proposal submitted by Michigan Education Special Services Association. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator. Oghumaw County received quotes for three comparable healthcare benefit packages and determined the proposal from Mesa was best suited to meet the needs of Oghumaw County employees at the most affordable rates. If approved, Mesa will be authorized to provide healthcare benefits to eligible Oghumaw County employees beginning on October one, twenty twenty-one. The resolution also authorizes Mesa to provide coverage to sheriff's office, road patrol deputies and command officers at their earliest possible opportunity, including retroactive coverage to the date their healthcare coverage was canceled without notice by the Michigan Conference of Teamsters Welfare Fund. Finally, where, finally, where premium costs are lower than the hard cap limited established by the Michigan Department of Treasury, the board agrees to contribute the difference to a health savings account for employees who select the Mesa ABC Plan One for healthcare coverage.
I'll make a motion, we pass this as presented, support.
Motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook. Tim, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, let me just elaborate a little bit on, on what was just read. As far as the Mesa program is concerned, currently our steelworkers, union employees, and our non-union employees receive Blue Cross coverage. That is what I would call an off-the-shelf model. So Blue Cross determines what that product is and sets the costs based on a low number of employees. In this case, it was roughly fifty. By joining the Mesa coverage, we're joining a pool, if you will, of about sixty-four thousand members or one hundred eighty-nine thousand insured lives. This economy of scale immediately results in savings to the county in terms of the premium costs moving forward. And actually, for all plans but one, all plans but one fall under that hard cap that was just adopted by the board. So immediately savings for the county simply by going to this model. But one plan, the two-person plan on the, one of the Mesa programs goes over the cap by roughly eighty-four dollars a year, which would mean any employee in that particular category would end up having to pay into the plan about three dollars fifty-four cents per paycheck. A marked decrease from about a hundred fifty dollars per check that we're paying right now under the off-the-shelf plan. And again, this is frankly just on the economy of scale by joining this much larger pool and a pool that frankly we could never create locally. And so it's very, very much beneficial to us that way. And the other part of this concerns the health savings account or the HSA component. Something that Mesa has called, a product called the ABC Plan One. This is a high deductible plan that they offer that the base cost of the plan is significantly less than the classic plan. So even with the savings that we would see by going with just the classic plan, any employee jumping into this high deductible plan will save the county even more on top of that savings. What the resolution says is the county would agree to provide to the employee that difference between the hard cap, that maximum rate the state says that we are allowed to pay. The difference between that and the actual premium price, which is considerably lower, and place those funds into what's called the self-health savings account. What this is, is an account that's controlled through, you know, various state and federal statutes and how it can be spent. It can only be spent on medical expenses, co-pays, deductibles, prescriptions, any kind of dental work, vision, and so on, but very limited in terms of what can be spent. Now, as most of us are aware, all of our policies have a deductible that we end up having to meet, meaning we pay out of pocket for certain services to a point, and then the insurance takes over and covers all costs. In, in the ABC plan, that's roughly fourteen hundred dollars per individual, twenty-eight hundred for a two-person out of pocket that would come with this. So this would provide some incentive for the employee to accept that ABC plan, receive that difference, if you will, in the health savings account. And the county, believe it or not, saves even more money by issuing this, this fund to the health savings account. There was a remark made at one of our conversations about this, well, what if the insurance goes up twenty percent next year? Well, A, it won't. B, if it did, we're still gonna be paying less than we're paying this year for health insurance. So this is really a win-win for all. And if we can encourage our employees as much as we can to join that ABC Plan One, the county will save even more on top of that. So it's, like I said, a win-win all the way around. The methodology of how we fund that, then we'll, we'll continue to have conversation about. But the bottom line is, we do not breach that hard cap number. The employees receive that HSA component, are able to help pay that deductible on that health insurance. And the entire product costs us significantly less than we're paying now.
Well, if something does happen, we still can, we can opt out. We have to give a thirty-day notice. You did inform us.
There was a different, another plan that came along that was even better.
Right.
We would be able to opt out. And, you know, the other item that we've been able to negotiate into a few contracts is something called a healthcare coalition, where representatives of each of these employee groups will meet with us at least once a year to go over this. And if there are products out there that are better, this is the group that will do the light work, study it, and make sure it's something that's applicable and bring that proposal to the board for action.
Any further discussion?
Well, Mark and I have been involved in all the negotiations. This isn't just a fly-by-night program. This is linked to, it is Blue Cross Bluefield. They are a vendor for it. So ninety-nine percent of doctors and clinics in the state of Michigan are taking this. I have spoke to quite a few people outside the county that has Mesa. They, they, they just rave about it. It's the Cadillac. It's, it's, it's the way to go. Most school systems have this. Judge Williams, that sat on a school board here locally, says, you wouldn't be able to pry this away from the teachers. They, they, they love it. And it's just a savings all the way around, both county and employees.
Definitely a win-win for both sides. To me, it's a no-brainer.
So.
I think everybody's probably in agreement with that, too. But it's, you know, the employees win, we, the employer, win, taxpayers win because it's costing us both, so.
Any further discussion? Will Cobalt?
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Item seven C, resolution to approve a collective bargaining agreement with police officers, Labor Council Command Officers Unit. This resolution is sponsored by the negotiation committee to approve a tentative labor agreement with police officers, Labor Council Command Officers Unit. The purpose of the agreement is to maintain and improve harmonious relationship of the county and the employee members of the bargaining unit through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
A move that we accept this contract as, as presented, support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve the resolution to approve a collective bargaining agreement with police officers, Labor Council Command Officers Unit. Tim, did you have anything?
I don't. Command officers, tentative agreement we reached late last week. And I do appreciate the fact that the unit got together and was able to review this and vote on it as quickly as they did to turn it around for tonight. The current contract will expire next Thursday. So it's very nice to have this done before that contract expires.
Any other discussion?
Do you have the specifics on that yet?
You may recall in close session, the walkthrough that we did with these contracts. So that's what the specifics are. I will have a clean copy that I can distribute probably to. I will have a clean copy that I can distribute probably tomorrow to the commission. This contract, I don't know if the team wants to provide any more detail on that. It was
Wasn't there some disparities with the percentage? Is this the same contract I'm thinking of?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm asking.
We were not in agreement.
I don't want to, I don't want to discuss it, but I know that we had some things that we wanted to
Bargain.
bargain with, and I'm just wondering if that was changed or not. So I really don't want to vote on that until I know what it ended up being.
So as far as the wage component is concerned, guys, you're going to have to help me with the percentages. I want to say.
It was five percent for sergeants from new hire.
Right.
And then what was four?
I think it was eight percent for after probation for the sergeant and twelve.
Are we allowed to discuss this? Because it was brought to us at like a ten and fifteen percent.
Ratified.
And
Yeah, we can.
We countered with a different percentage.
We really can't vote on it unless we know what we're.
I don't understand.
It's been ratified, right?
So what did they counter with? It's for lieutenant positions, right?
It's for sergeant lieutenant positions. Sheriff, if you remember what they were exactly.
Twelve percent lieutenants, eight percent sergeants, five percent six-month probation.
Eight and twelve. Right.
Originally, it was ten and fifteen.
And just so that you have the same information we were working from with bargaining, we did get through the Sheriff's Association statewide analysis for these positions and not to, you know, give away as really not a secret. That's a public document. We've all reviewed it. This, these percentages are actually a little bit under what the statewide average is for these positions. They were averaging somewhere in the sixteen-ten range, sixteen-seventeen on the lieutenant side, about ten percent on the sergeant side. And what we're comparing this to when we say percentage, this is against the top wage for patrol deputy position. So it would be these percentages above that top rate.
We accepted our counter. We countered back.
I thought we countered back at ten and, ten and eight.
Going to close session right, right tonight and discuss, and then if we can see the finalized version, then we could vote on it.
Well, I, I thought you were going to provide us with that information. You were going to do some research. Somebody was. Do some research and see where we were, and I know you just reported that, but I would like to see it.
I mean, you guys have seen it. They've seen it. Tim has seen it, but the other three haven't seen it. How can we vote on something we haven't seen?
I didn't even know that there was a counter that took place.
Well, yeah, well, there's always
Yeah, we.
back and forth on bargaining. I can get that material like right now. Just give me a couple of minutes to go down the hall and grab my file. And we can get that in front of you. The only urgency behind this is going back to the health insurance component. This is one of the groups that's not insured at the moment. While we did provide the opportunity for them to sign up for the current Blue Cross plan, part of the Mesa plan is that they will begin insuring them virtually immediately. They need to, would like to start signing up tomorrow to get their coverage.
I appreciate that. Wanting to get the number.
Yeah, I, I, I do. I mean, this is a substantial amount of money.
Five minutes here, I'll be right back.
In the head. Nice to see you, Brenda. Say yes.
Say it was nice to see me.
I did not.
Yeah, you did not.
It's nice to see you, Brenda.
Pardon me, please.
It's nice to see you. In a while.
Well, I've been on the comment. Maybe it won't be.
Three minutes.
All right, you can use my three minutes.
Please don't.
He is a friend. He's a, he's my friend.
It's gonna rain on Saturday.
But we're gonna have It's gonna be snow tomorrow, so.
For sure.
I don't know. We gotta go to Sioux tomorrow night for football, so it's probably gonna be snow.
We're gonna be bio fest tomorrow, so.
Football season.
I didn't know. I thought maybe you were not just joking, but you'd actually.
Making a prediction.
Probably.
Yeah, Murphy's Law, right?
How's your kids doing?
Good.
All good, good.
Yeah, they, um.
But I did.
Played out Tina last weekend and seventh grade, one forty, four and nothing.
What are you doing? Okay. You're gonna talk?
Just real quickly.
Okay, perfect. What?
Maybe it's number ten.
Yeah, you're a department head, right, Rick?
Yes.
I guess maybe.
Yes. I got you now.
You're a VIP.
Pardon me? I can't hear either. Don't be loud, please. Click your room full of.
Crack filing system.
Sign up for polls that we ended up with. Our full-time sergeants would receive a base wage rank differential of eight percent. And these are non-probationary sergeants. Our full-time lieutenants would receive the base wage rank differential thirteen percent. And our probationary sergeants after October one would receive a five percent rank differential until the probationary period ended. And then would automatically go to the eight percent for the sergeant rate.
Can you explain that a little bit, people who are listening, these percentages?
It's a percentage. We call it the rank differential. And the other contract that we'll talk about next, there's a top rate for road patrol deputies of twenty-six dollars an hour. And what this is, is a percentage above that top rate to assume these command positions. And we only have the two, the sergeants and the lieutenants. I don't believe we have any other ranks. Outside of the sheriff and the undersheriff in the department. So these are individuals who end up with some level of supervisory responsibility that would be defined in a, in a job description and based on the rank that's been earned.
It would be an eight percent increase.
That is their current wage.
Hang on. Tim, can you explain that better?
It's an eight percent increase above what the top rank with the patrol deputy would be. So there's an assumption that we've got a higher order here. Patrol deputy, sergeant, and then lieutenant. So the patrol deputies are paid hourly, and we'll get into it in a second, what that pay scale looks like. The sergeant then, in that position, would earn eight percent above what the top deputy would earn. The lieutenant would earn thirteen percent above what that top deputy would earn.
And that salary not hourly, correct?
We calculated that an hourly.
And then how is that based, or how does that compare to what they're currently making?
I have a current, looks like a current top out for the lieutenant at twenty-five forty-three. I'm quickly doing the math.
Wow.
But then minute twenty-nine thirty-eight now. Well, under the for the lieutenant for the, but the differential.
So it's a four dollar an hour raise.
It's substantially increased, but does not see increases in any other year of the agreement.
And that's for the sergeant.
That was the lieutenant.
So that was the eight percent, the thirteen percent? Okay, well, they don't run that. And where do these, where do these percentages come from?
We reviewed the wage survey that was provided or done by the Michigan Sheriff's Association. And what we ended up with was actually bargaining the deputy contract first and fell in a range that was almost right smack in the middle, the average of what the statewide average was for patrol deputy. And then the percentages, it's what we bargained back and forth. We did a thirteen-eight. The average across the state was, I believe it was sixteen and ten. So these are actually lower than what the state average is for the differential.
As far as where they're at now, do you have, do you have that information? I mean, is that information that we're able to see?
I can provide you. I've got it on the computer in an Excel spreadsheet. It shows you the rank by county. There are other ranks that we don't have. There are captains and, and one other rank, I think, that's in there. But you'll see what the wages for all the deputies across the state and what each of the sergeant lieutenant rates are as well.
Because I mean, we all agreed, I, I guess I don't know how much, we all agreed on the deputy increases. The health insurance is better. What, what our our concern was, was these percentages for the sergeant and lieutenant. That was our only. If I remember our session correctly, that was our only.
We wanted, we wanted to see if we'd been lower those because we thought that those were a little bit too high. And I think that they, we gained at least two percent on each of those contracts. Is that correct?
Not following the gain two percent.
I thought we originally were fifteen and ten. And now we're at thirteen and eight, right?
Right.
Yeah. And that should bring us pretty competitive with.
It puts us right on the statewide average. We did prepare a map just to show what we were compared to our neighboring counties. County to the east, I believe, is still a little higher than what ours are, but we are at least comparable, if not a little bit better than the other counties that touch us.
What, what I would have liked to have seen is, oh, I'm sorry, Brad.
No, go ahead.
What I would have liked to have seen, I don't disagree with this over a period of time, but I don't agree with this jump right now, and then just maintaining that. What is the, the incentive to stay? You know, I would like to have seen over a three- or four-year period to get to that eight percent and thirteen percent. Um, not that jump and then stagnant for a period of time. That's, that, that's what I.
This is all, this is all part of bargaining. I mean, we, we present a case to, to, to the unit. We, they go and caucus together privately. They come back, they'll make us an offer, we caucus then. It's back and forth. It's time-consuming. It's different things. We, we take this, if you give up that, both back and forth. It would be nearly impossible to make an offer and then wait for a board meeting to talk it over with everybody else, then go back and listen to their counter, then come back to a board meeting. That's why we have committees.
But we're having meetings every week. So again, this is only the second time that we've discussed this, and you're asking us to vote on it. So I'm just telling you what I would have liked to have seen.
That's why we, and I'm only telling you, and this is why we have committee.
I, I agree with you, Craig, that we do have committees for this, but at some point, you have to get it close because we, we went into closed session already once. And you brought us up to speed on almost everything. Okay, and then we had some, some questions and concerns about some things. And obviously, you guys went back and you hammered out those. My thing was, is we just never got that information back again before we were asked to vote. So that's the only thing I was concerned about, and everything else that I'm seeing in there is accurate to what we already discussed.
I do want to point out from a compensation standpoint, we did eliminate three items. One is longevity, which is no longer in this contract. The second item was an education enhancement that is no longer in the contract. And finally, there was also gun allowance that is no longer in the contract. So those three things, the union actually gave up these three, I don't know what you call those extra pays, whatever you, if you want to call that.
Jenny, if I can just address one thing with you.
Please.
Um, you know, you mentioned that you got a concern of what's somebody trying to stay. By the time you're a sergeant or lieutenant, you got a lot of years in that place, and you're not going anywhere.
Well, you've been there, but again, you know, we're probably looking at some that are close to retirement. I don't know. I'm making an assumption.
Right.
So it would be nice if, if while we're, we're trying to build and grow, that they had some incentive to stay.
They will after what we did, we front-loaded the thing. Granted, okay. That was part of the negotiation process. Say, you know, because initially we had, you know, a time period going out. And it was just how, that's just how the back and forth negotiation works, you know, so.
Again, I agree with these, but I would have liked to have.
We worked our butts off, quite frankly. It was, you know, we're trying to take and, and, you know, we met with them trying to take and, and, you know, hammer out number one, a fair
Trying to take and, and, you know, hammer out number one, a fair contract that everybody can live with, you know. And I think that part of the reason you're seeing this, you know, I mean, it's, they rushed it through their ratification process, both units. And the big issue is the insurance.
And I agree with that. Let's get it.
I, I know, and I know, I understand that the only issue you guys, the, I'm gonna say you and Brad, because I was the one that heard, that have an issue with the. Just the spread, that percentage of, you know, the differential between what top deputy is and the sergeant lieutenant. Alls I can tell you is, you know, we did our best and.
I think it's a win for, for the county as to have a frozen, frozen wage. Over the next three years, I mean, we don't have an escalator in there. That's a good thing.
Understandable. My concern again is, is the incentive to stay. I agree, let's be competitive. I agree with all of that. That is my only argument is I would have said this eight and this thirteen percent, spread it out over the three years. You know, a sudden four dollar an hour raises is, is pretty substantial, so.
In, in that case, then if there was a retirement, then the person moving up. Would move up at a different, in the second year they'd make more and the third year they'd make more. I mean, we're frozen. I mean, this is, this is what, this is what the company side of negotiations wants. You, you get those escalators in there and that's what, that's what costs a lot more money.
I'm saying at the end of the result, at the end of the three years, be at that eight thirteen percent. So we're competitive with other ones. That's just my.
Then you need to look again, because at the end of three years, you're back in negotiations again.
Right.
You know, where are you gonna go from there?
Well, when you're already at that, no matter what, either way, you're, the end results the same. We're both saying the same thing, just differently. But any other?
Jenny David. Rick Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Fred Newbecker.
Yes.
Resolution seventy to approve collective bargaining agreement with police officer. Labor council patrol deputies unit. This resolution is sponsored by the negotiation committee to approve a tentative labor agreement with police officers, labor council patrol deputies unit. The purpose of the agreement is to maintain and improve the harmonious relationship of the county and employee members of the bargaining unit through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I make a motion to.
That's a source of resolution support.
Commissioner from. Support from Commissioner Serbrook. Tim, can you elaborate on this?
Well, and let's go right back now to the wage discussion, because this is the contract that actually sets the foundation for the one that was just approved. Here we, and this is numbers that we had already discussed, any road deputy. A new hire after October one would start at twenty dollars an hour and then would increase in wages. After five years to twenty-six dollars an hour. Now, these numbers, again, and particularly on the top end on the twenty-six. Our position going in was again, looking at that Michigan Sheriff's Association wage survey. And getting ourselves positioned so that we'd be competitive in our own region. Twenty-six an hour is slightly better than midpoint statewide. And again, the county to our west is slightly higher and the other counties that border us are roughly a little bit lower. Than this is. But as you work your way further south, you get into Midland, Clare and so on, the numbers increase. As you might imagine going downstate. So we, we believe from a position of the bargaining committee that this is a good scale. The original scale that we started with was actually spread out over twenty years. So this condenses that scale considerably, gets our, our officers to that top rate a lot sooner than the twenty years that we had. And like the other contract, the longevity, education enhancement and the gun allowance are all eliminated in this contract. So it is the true wage that the deputy earns.
We all seen that, we've all agreed on it, correct?
Yes, you can see this.
Questions?
We're seeing in all the negotiations, you're talking five different contracts total across the county. We're trying to streamline everybody pretty close to the same. Over the years here, there's been a lot of apprehension between unions. And we're trying to get a lot of this streamlined down, like eliminating some of these, these other little perks. With the longevity and the, you know, the education premium and things like that. So this has really been working out good. And I gotta say, on the employee side, since I was involved three years ago, on the employee side. This has been really good. I, 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 I'm surprised on, on. Because when we finish this up, I looked right at him and I says, are you happy with what you got? And they are. And I'm really kind of surprised.
The feeling in the building is different too.
Yeah, the steelworkers, I, I, I gotta tell you, I mean, I got fainted when I walked over the back door and I couldn't believe that. I couldn't believe it. But I, I think it's good for both sides. The healthcare component is huge in this thing. And, and, but on the, you know, I think that we're, we're answering. We're, we're taking care of the county's. Needs by, by doing this. And, and we're taking care of the, the elected officials, department heads needs along with the employees do. And as far as the sheriff's department, I mean, we've heard it from different, different means. On what had to be taken care of. And I think we've done our part and we're doing our part to do this. And I would hope that this will change the, the employee's outlook on us ruthless commissioners.
But I think the, I think this will help with retaining and recruiting officers moving forward, so. Can we get a roll call vote?
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item seven C claims, we've got a total of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, twenty-five dollars and fifty-four cents.
I had the opportunity to review claims and I would make a motion when we pay claims and you know, do you state it?
Oh, second.
You have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook and support from Commissioner Vaughn. I, I had some questions. Childcare was a big one this time. Forty-three, is that right? Forty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars?
I didn't think childcare was.
Fifteen.
I am looking at it, am I?
That's forty-three thousand seventy-five.
I was at it earlier. It's forty-three thousand.
Six seventy-five. That's a lot of money, yes, but it's not high.
I was gonna say it's not high from childcare.
I was just wondering for you that you two gentlemen that reviewed claims.
There were some, I don't count, there was one that was out of county, we spent, I'm trying to remember.
Doesn't take much.
To Ross Common and they were, yeah, it was out of county housing. I don't remember what the amount was, it didn't really jump up. The ones that jumped out at me and it's not out of the norm. Is our quarterly appropriation of thirty-two thousand, district health. One title, one pepper's draw down to Jack Morris at twenty-two and. I had a equalization, there was a GIS through seventy-five hundred dollars.
And that, that wasn't under appropriations for, for Jack?
I believe it was. That's special, that one was bouncing around. Yeah, it's because it was ARPA funds and it was. I'm trying to remember which one it was. And then, because they, clerk's also had a discussion with you about.
Initially, we were gonna bill it to the childcare fund because it is a childcare day treatment center. But then I would just have to transfer funds from ARPA to the childcare. And because we have to have special reporting for the ARPA to the feds, we're gonna keep everything coded.
Tracy and I had that, and you probably had the same thing with her, Ron, when you reviewed was, where that, where that one was gonna be.
That's why I just questioned that, because I wrote down here on this paper fifteen, four forty-six for childcare. And if you take.
I was gonna say, I, you take that twenty-eight, that's the forty-three, so I think it is showing on childcare, that's.
We're on.
Yeah.
Right, and it was only makes sense to me and that's what direction I thought it was gonna go, you know. So that's why that, I mean, I wrote it down as, you know, that figure and maybe in this that we're looking at. That's the.
Well, the bill for, the bill for Jack Morris had just come in and hadn't even been put in when I committed.
Okay.
Cause I come in early, so I was looking at that, but that, that was the big one. One that I see was pretty big too, was warrants, we're twelve hundred. And that's.
I see it. There's a lot of housing costs also that are up there. There's a, a number of different things. That's out of, out of the housing fund.
Right, that's the rehabs and that's all there, yeah.
You know, that.
Hey, can we get a roll call vote? Mark Serbrook.
Yes. I'm sorry, I had one.
Sorry, go ahead.
Not, I'm not trying to question anything, but are we sure that the, the mileage? For Mark is, is that something that we can do? I thought we didn't accept mileage.
It was an out of county meeting, but if not, it's no big deal to me.
I'm just making sure that you're happy with it. So I, I thought we had updated that.
I was going by what I was given.
Mark even came on.
If it was out of county, you could get reimbursed.
I thought, I thought we updated that.
In county now.
So much for me, that's where that ended. I don't know, I don't turn it in, I don't know.
It's been a while since they, since you've discussed travel for commissioners, but I, I think I would have to agree with Mark if it was.
I have a problem with it, but I thought that we had changed that, that we weren't, because I know when we went to training.
Again.
I was only going by, I was only going by what I was given when I came in as a commissioner, said the per diem rates and the rules for per diem. And that was, I said, if it was out of county, and it was in Iosco, so. And that's the only reason I put in for it. Like I said, if you guys don't want to pay it, that's fine with me.
No, no, no.
Big deal to me.
I just want to make sure that there's not anything on the books that says you can't get it.
Except I just went off what was given to me on the per diem, so.
When we went to our commissioner training, I went down to Frankenmuth. And muted too, and I don't believe we got reimbursed for our mileage at that time.
No, my understanding was there was no mileage on anything, because we even went to Gaylord.
Gaylord. In a blizzard.
In a blizzard.
Cause Tim, can you look into that? Cause I do remember discussion. I don't know, it's something that we, we're all on the same, same. Yeah.
Just the sentence, it's not, it's not illegal. Okay, so there's, there's no like state statute that says you can't do that, so it would be your own rules that we'll, we'll need to look at.
Exactly.
Roll call vote.
Well, we can leave it in there for now. I mean, if we do find that there is something on the books.
I'll pay you back.
Pay you back.
No big deal.
Mark Serbrook. Not driving backwards. Brandon Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item eight, unfinished business. Item eight, eight A fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget.
Was placed on the agenda ahead of our meeting next week. You can hopefully have all had an opportunity to review the draft recommended budget. And this is on the agenda to just allow discussion and any other suggestions the board has for the budget.
I appreciate the PDF format, Tim. Oh my God, that's much, so much easier. I was struggling with the Excel and then when you put that PDF on, and I, I sat down yesterday for about two and a half hours, I think I scanned through everything and. Made a whole lot easier to try and figure out what's going on.
Did you have any suggestions, recommendations?
I, I talked to Tim yesterday. And that was the per diems, because there wasn't any per diem in there for the commissioners. So that's why that per diem, which just came about. But I didn't see anything in there that I had any issues with or any serious questions. Like I said, that PDF format was a lot easier to compare and look at it, so that, that made it. Much simpler on my pea brain.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Well, to be honest, I was gone for the last couple of days and I had a chance to look at it, but I've got nothing on the schedule tomorrow, so. All day tomorrow.
Commissioner Newbecker.
No.
I'm good with it so far.
You did, Commissioner Newbecker did contact yesterday with the.
Sorry.
School resource officer budget and missed what that we had budgeted too much in there. We've made the adjustment to reflect that that's a nine-month operation.
So it was budgeted for what, twelve months?
It was budgeted.
So the plan is to have a public hearing next Thursday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, I knew that. And then. Then to adopt the budget. So as of right now, I mean, you're assuming that the budget that you have presented is a go ahead.
And as a commission, you have until you vote next week to make any modifications. So anything that you see in the next week, it can be brought in. Discussed and, and modified as, as you see fit.
Okay, so is the mileage is gonna be a discussion next week? Is the mileage is?
We can discuss it now. On the road patrol mileage, the proposed budget would reduce that to half mil. And as I mentioned last week, this is assuming carryover from this year, which I was very conservative about. So we weren't gonna cut ourselves short next year. But remember the budget that you see for all of the funds and not just road patrol assumes full staffing for the full year. We know we're not gonna be a full staffing on October first. So there's already, you know, more in there, so there, there is, you know, perhaps more room for a conversation. I have no idea, as I don't think anybody can look in their crystal ball and say, on this date, we will be fully staffed. So we assume the, the full expense and move forward. So the point being, again, there's, you know, take a look at that. If you feel comfortable reducing it further, you know, we can have that conversation. Now Jeff Nichols is on Zoom. We had a conversation at the last meeting about the veterans' mileage. And you all saw Jeff's email and his analysis of that, so that's also one that you can consider as far as reduction is concerned.
Is he, do you wanna discuss it?
He's, he's on.
Are you there? You're muted. There you go. Can you give us an update on, on the veterans' millages?
Sorry, say that again, I apologize.
You're okay. Can you give us an update?
Ah, as I, as I stated in the email, I, I don't think there's an issue with not levying this year. Don't, I, I, I don't see a reason, a reason to levy a mil for the office at all. As far as the two fourteen fund, I don't think there's a reason to levy that this year. We could probably, or, or even reduce it even more, but I honestly don't believe there's a reason. Our usage has been down. I think we, we will use our office budget pretty much this year. Cause we now have a full-time, two full-time folks in here. But yeah, I, I don't see any problems with not levying it. We have quite a significant amount of contingency funds.
Thank you for that, Jeff. Any other discussion? As, as the two millages that I, I was looking at was the road patrol mileage and the MSU extension fund. Those are the two millages that I would like to see decreased.
Do you have anybody from MSU?
We do. Would you like to come on up?
Um, good evening. Julie Darden from MSU Extension. I still don't have an accounting of the full fund balance for MSU Extension. However, we have increased the number of hours that we're paying for support staff. However, um, we have increased the number of hours that we're paying for support staff. So I believe we'll take, uh, some funds from the fund balance to pay for the additional hours. Um, I think that was the plan when we increased the position from a halftime to, I believe right now we're at point seven five. Um, and in addition, um, we, we can make a plan to expend more of, of the fund balance. Um, we do currently pay, uh, so the, the funding that the village brings in pays for the base assessment from MSU, and then in addition, it pays for additional investment into our four H program coordinator position. Um, and then there are other line items to support the office, including the lease and equipment. And we have a plan to make a rather large purchase for us of equipment, uh, to replace our copier. Um, uh, just essentially to, to upgrade, uh, from a piece of equipment that we were leasing into a purchase um, and reduce the need to have a consistent bill for that. Um, we are, we've been delivering service even at a remote, um, rate. Uh, when we were not in our offices, we were still working remotely and doing our best to meet the needs of, of the community. Um, through health education, youth engagement, agriculture, support for agriculture. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about any of our services or, um, any of our budgeting.
Well, this is correct, that if we, if we go forward with continuing to pull that amount of that mileage, the surplus is estimated to be sixty one thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars, correct? Am I reading that correctly?
That came right out of the audit, so that's a hard number, yes.
That's if we decide to pull that amount of the mileage that's currently being pulled, correct?
Right.
Um, uh, and I'm gonna give you my rationale on it. I agree you guys have been working remotely. I, i- this has been a very difficult year and a half. I'm not gonna take that away from anybody. Um, but I feel like, uh, MSU that the mileage passed, um, it was sold on the four H aspect. Um, when this pandemic hit last year, uh, March, um, the four H was pretty much dropped on your guys' end as far as MSU goes. Kids were left pretty much high and dry. The kids that were active in four H in this, in this county. Um, thankfully, the fair board did kick in and, and they were able to go forward with a show and an auction. Um, they collected three percent from the kids versus MSU that collects seven percent. Um, that's a pretty substantial difference. Um, they've continued with that. The same thing happened this year. You guys did have four H, but your meetings were via Zoom. I mean, you're doing, uh, safety measures. I, I, I understand that. But unfortunately, because of this pandemic, I, the, the four H, I, I don't feel like the kids have been getting the services that we're collecting these monies for. Um, as many other things. So, uh, again, this past year, so this is a second year in a row that the fair board, um, did the fair, did the kids, uh, pull three percent versus a seven percent. Um, I personally, uh, would like to cut that mileage, um, a touch. I'm not saying all of it, but I, I would like to decrease that. Um, as far as the road patrol mileage, I, I'm comfortable doing the point two five. Again, the same, similar scenario where collecting funds that, uh, services that have not been provided. Um, that's, that's where I stand on the two millages, so. And the veterans, I thank you for that, Jeff.
Sorry, I'm unsure if I should stay here.
No, you're good. Thank you.
Okay.
I.
I'm sorry, Commissioner David, I.
You're good.
I want to be responsive to any questions that you have.
And this was out of your hands. This is my, this is my opinion on this mileage as far as pulling from taxpayers and, and people are hurting and inflation's through the roof, and, and that's what I, I feel like we can do.
It is, it is really helpful for me to hear and to understand, um, what you're, where you're coming from. Um, I will say that during the period of, of the pandemic, um, Michigan State University Extension didn't eliminate any positions, didn't put anyone on furlough, uh, didn't eliminate anybody's time. Um, we did have a staff member who was on leave twice during the period of our remote work, uh, for, for maternity leave, so we, and we did not incur costs for wages during those, um, family leave periods. Um, because she fell into a category where she had unpaid leave, essentially. Um, but, um, my hope is that we can, um, um, be of a benefit to, continue to be a benefit to the community and to, to serve the community in the way that it, it, it expects to be served and to carry on the proud tradition of the four H program, the youth programs that we have. Um, I will say that, uh, those meetings that were happening remotely were directly benefiting the livestock clubs that then were part of the fair, um, and many of those policies that were made to protect kids on a statewide level, um, the rationale for that locally may not have been as visible as it was to us when we considered that we were bringing together kids from many different school districts to one location with the potential that a choice that was made to have a, a club meeting in person could wreak havoc across more than one classroom, more than one school, more than one family. And, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has, but I also understand your position.
And I understand that too. I'm not saying necessarily the meetings, but are in person, um, you know, the Zoom does work as far as that goes, but as far as these kids had animals purchased, um, I mean, they had, uh, so, a lot of them sold them. They, they, they had no backup plan for these, these kids that were active in four H, and thankfully, the fair board did move forward with the kids that chose to, uh, uh, keep those animals. Very disappointed in MSU for not having some backup plan for these kids. Um, that's, it's, uh. All I have.
Sure, yeah.
Pathetically, if COVID seems to go away a little bit this next calendar year, will you have stepped, will you have? Are you planning to provide more services than you did in the past, or are you just gonna get the status quo?
Well, um, we, we do plan to have more engagement with youth in person. Um, just today, we were supposed to be at toll-free wellness park for the bio fest. Um, it was canceled due to weather. We'll be there tomorrow, engaging with classrooms, um, and talking about, uh, you know, issues around natural science and, and, uh, ecology and, and things like that. Um, we'll be working in person. We do have protocols in place to meet in person. You may notice that I'm masked. That's one of our protocols that we've enacted statewide. Um, and so we, we will allow, uh, clubs and individuals to meet in person. And we, we have had a gap in terms of, of program coordinators who lead the program. Um, Peggy Zettel finished her service on the thirtieth of July, which was, uh, just before the fair. I think it was her hope and ours that we would have a staff person in place sooner. But I will, I will admit that we do, uh, our hiring process through the university does take some time, so.
But I mean, for the calendar year of twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
Are you gonna step up the services that, beyond where you were before, or are you just gonna get to that point?
Yeah, it's certainly our intention to deliver more. Um, we will be delivering both in person and virtually, um, to try to reach as many people as possible. It may be a benefit that we.
If you plan on doing more, then you'll need that fund balance along with, uh, uh, along with the mileage to support that more program.
Well, I, I would just say, I will do my best to invest that fund balance in the programs that we can. I, um, I can't promise that I'll expend sixty one thousand dollars in the course of the year. And I also appreciate the fact that you have decisions to make that affect the taxpayers of Opa-Map County. Um, of course, I'm gonna advocate that you don't reduce the mileage, um, because that is my role in this, um, and I think we all appreciate that we have different, uh, priorities to, to, um, promote. Um, but certainly we're investing some of that funding. Um, there are some, there are some purchases that we need to make to keep the office open and going, and we certainly can invest more of that fund balance. I, I will say, I just, I apologize, I was not aware that that fund balance had gotten that large, so that is my error, that is something I will work on, um, and, uh, you must make the decision that you feel is best for Opa-Map County.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else on the budget, guys?
Well, Commissioner David, do you have an idea how much you wanna cut out of that?
Um, I would like to sit down with Tim and, and go over those numbers. That mileage is point one, four, six, five. Um, and I, and I, I respect your opinion as far as where you were headed with that, uh, Commissioner Scott, but let's be realistic over the next year, um, at least over the next six months, as far as, uh, I think we're gonna hopefully at least stay stagnant with where we are with our services and not decline as far as, uh, where we are, but, um.
Well, I thought it was a fair question.
It was, and I just said that. It was a fair question, but as far as from a realistic standpoint.
Well, I think it was realistically fair.
Okay, so I, 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 anything else on the budget? Item eight, the collective bargaining.
Uh, that was a sort of a placeholder, not knowing whether or not the other two units, uh, would have ratified before now, so that's.
You still have two units to go, we, right.
So nothing?
Nothing.
Okay, you will keep us informed?
You bet.
Okay. Item nine, administrator's report.
A couple of things to update the board on. First, uh, Commissioner Serbrook and I were assigned to meet with uh, Kelly Jones and Kevin Elliott to go over the property, uh, proposal that was put forward. We did accomplish that. We will bring, uh, the results to the October seventh commission of the whole meeting for conversation with the board uh, on, uh, probably a couple of options that you, you can consider. Uh, we did also, uh, in contact with the county attorney, uh, about, uh, some of the other dynamics involved, and we'll present all that on October seventh. And, uh, second, another follow-up, I might remember, I think a couple of meetings ago, I reported on our meeting with BSNA and their electronic, um, time clock, and we did meet with the third-party vendor that they suggested. And as advertised, it was, um, quite a, quite an impressive, uh, bit of software. We are, we have more questions for them. We've scheduled another meeting, um, that will occur before, again, the October seventh committee, the whole meeting. Uh, so we've been able to bring the board a proposal from either BSNA or the third-party, uh, for the board to talk about in more detail. We'll have probably Tom Spencer, uh, get into some of the finer details for the software, and then Tracy Turner will talk about, uh, particularly how that will impact how we process payroll. And both systems will make her job much easier and probably, uh, much less chance for error, uh, as payroll is being calculated, uh, so it's gonna come down to a matter of cost and which one will work best for the county. So you'll look forward to that. Two more items for the community, the whole, uh, on October seventh. That's it.
Item ten, elected officials and department head reports. Rick, come on up.
Yeah, this won't take too long. I, I thought it was kind of important to just let the whole board know about a subject that had recently come up. Ron knows about it, Craig knows about it, and I've been talking with Tim a little bit. Couple of months ago, we were contacted by Ross Common County, and they had purchased a new actuary machine and they're going. The machine they were using was working fine. They called us to see if we would be interested in getting it. And so, big long story short, about, I think it was the week before last, Ron and I and Jim and Jim went to Ross Common and loaded this thing up and brought it here. Um, so we're looking at possibly getting this thing set up. There's no big rush. We have to make sure it's working properly. We're not gonna go through a whole bunch of changes if it's not even working right. But we got it here. It hasn't cost us a penny. It should speed up things at the door. Uh, cause purses and briefcases and everything can go right through this machine. Those of you that have ever been out there, you'll, you know how it works. Kind of like the ones in airports, but probably a little smaller.
Don't have to take our shoes off.
Pardon?
Don't have to take our shoes off?
No, I don't take shoes off. Please don't. Um, I wanted, I wanted all you guys to know, because it could affect the building in the, in the sense that we'll have to change the entrance. Because I was hoping it would fit in the hallway where we're at. It's too wide by three or four inches. Um, so we'd probably be going back to that front door, but we won't be doing anything right away until we know the machine works. But I thought you guys ought to know, if you have any thoughts about this, not tonight, um, just, you know, get in with Tim, he can let me know. Give me a holler when you're in the building or something, and, uh, just be aware that this is a possibility. Uh, we have the machine. That was the important thing, was to get it here, and now we gotta, we can take our time to get this whole program set up with that thing. So I think it'll help us a lot.
Did you, um, review this with the security committee yet?
What?
Then you reviewed this with the security committee yet?
I'm sorry, Brad.
Speak up.
The security committee, have you reviewed that with them yet?
We haven't talked about it yet. Uh, well, we've had a meeting since this all came about.
Great.
I'll, I'll bring it up at that meeting, and, um, I think it's gonna be a good thing. Um, I know Tom Spencer went and plugged it in to see if, you know, the conveyor works and all that kind of stuff. The problem is we have this little remote control thing that's like a video game, that none of us know how to work that. I contacted Ross Common. They're gonna send somebody down to show us real quick how it works. So, um, but we'll bring it up at the security committee meeting and go from there, but it's fun to put the thought in your heads, just so you know what's happening. We're not surprised by it.
Thank you.
Well, the deal was free. I'm glad you grabbed it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I can't believe it.
Yeah, yeah, it's, um.
But since you took Ron, you can't get any mileage. Sorry.
No.
Any, any, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Update.
Anything real quick?
Nope.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
I don't have an update.
Treasurer.
Uh, Karen Gublowski, Opa-Map County Treasurer, uh, update for the treasurer's office. We are performing principal residence exemption audits for violations. We are ramping up border review payments and buildings to our local units. And just to let you know, my new team member Julie is off to a great start. She's a quick study. She's doing a great job, and our office is heading in a very positive direction.
Thank you. Sheriff.
I just got a couple of things. Um, ratifying the contract is huge for hiring process. It really will make it very, very appealing for new applicants that will apply, so thank you very much, uh, for sitting through that, Tim. I sat on the other side before, and this is the smoothest I've ever seen it go. Thank you very much for what you did there. Appreciate it. Um, so ratifying that is gonna be huge in the hiring process, so we're gonna reach out to the other people that applied. And they didn't, they didn't want the job because of the insurance and all that, so we're gonna, we're gonna enlighten them what our new contract is, so hopefully that will entice them in this way. Um, the two individuals that are in the academy, they're doing real well. And that was, that money there came out of that mileage money, and also we took two deli, two, we took delivery of two Tavos. And that also came out of that mileage money. Uh, the equipment is gonna be ordered for them vehicles. Uh, they're setting over to the lot, and they're really nice looking vehicles. That's for our night shift, night patrol. Um, Chaplain, uh, Paul Heaton was interviewed yesterday by both papers, so his stuff will be out there. Uh, he is now, he's working under our authority. Uh, he's not getting paid. It's all volunteer, so, uh, he's there. So if anybody within our office wants to reach out to him as a chaplain, um, I know, I know throughout my years, it would have been nice if I would have had somebody like that to talk to in some times I went through, but he's there for us, and he's also there for our community people, so if they need some assistance in that, and that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What's about any community civic, uh, meetings, events you went to?
I have not, no.
You went to the Kiwanis, I heard.
Yeah, no.
You went to Rose Township?
No.
Didn't you?
No.
He ain't go to Kiwanis.
Oh, I heard he did.
Any other questions for the sheriff?
Yeah, I thought it was, or Optimus.
I will.
Thank you.
I, yeah, I went to the Optimus.
There you go.
I go there all the time.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Oh, I got a question about the car. May I?
Please.
You said they're for night patrol, so are they gonna, are you gonna keep them parked until we do that?
Yes, sir. That's what we, that's what they're.
The last couple of cars that were outfitted, were outfitted at a, at a company outside the county. They're, you gonna try to look for somebody in the county?
Uh, this, this guy does a very, very good job. What I do, I, I turn that right over to Doug Haseman. He's our, our road lieutenant. So I'd have to meet with him and go with that.
I'd encourage that. I'd encourage taking a little bit, somebody in county.
I don't have an answer for you right now.
That's fine.
But that's why we have, he does a great job for us on that roadside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Department heads?
Thank you. Good evening again, uh, Julie Darden, MSU Extension. Um, I wanted to take the opportunity to, uh, introduce our new program coordinator for the four H program, who started on the thirteenth, and, um, and I'm gonna give her a chance to introduce herself. Um, and I'm gonna give her a chance to introduce herself, but there will also be a chance for you to meet. Us and staff from the extension program at Toll Free Wellness Park on Monday at five thirty, between five thirty and seven. It'll be kind of an open house event, so you can drop in and interact with us, while we'll be out there, we'll have some cider, we'll have donut holes. Um, I just paid for the donut holes today from the Colonial Village Bakery, so I'm really excited for that. And, uh, planning to get local cider, local food's kind of a passion of mine, so I'll be getting some settled orchard cider. Um, um, and yes, I just love to name drop stuff like that, but, uh. I wanted to give Anya De Fighter a chance to introduce herself, and, um, if you have questions for her, um, she is, she is working in our office now.
All right. Hi, everybody, I'm Anya De Fighter, um, I am the new 4H program coordinator for Ogumaw County. Um, I was born and raised in Michigan, actually down by East Lansing, so Spartan roots, uh, run a bit deep. Um, I did actually relocate to Florida for a few years, I worked in environmental education there. Um, and actually was a big part of being able to continue a lot of those programs through COVID, so I do have a lot of sympathy and understanding for definitely changes that happen. With education and community engagement through COVID, um, and to kind of answer your question earlier, I do plan. To make it my mission to do my absolute best with whatever resources I can possibly come up with. Um, to, to really bring that, that level of the programming, especially with that 4H, especially with engaging our community, really back up to the level it was. And then really just kind of jump over that level as well, and really try to bring it to the, to the forefront, because I do know it is very, very important in this community, I have. Family down, uh, in kind of the lower part of Michigan, that was very, very involved with 4H through most of their lives, and they were very, very excited to find out that I was kind of. Joining that 4H adventure as well, so if you guys have any questions, please feel free, I'd be happy to answer whatever I can for you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Any department heads or elected officials on the phone? Anybody on the phone? Okay, we are gonna go on to manners from the floor, are there any, Tim? Motion's from the, motions for adoption? Item thirteen, committee reports, Commissioner Serbrook.
I attended, uh, was, lacking townships, uh, meeting there, uh. Clerk Ellen Rush has tendered her resignation effective December thirty first. She wanted to give plenty of time to find a replacement, so obviously breaking that.
I did not know that.
No.
When, the end of the year?
Yes. She wanted to give plenty of notice, so she knows the last week's meeting, so. I attended Westbridge City, I told them about the Mesa thing, they were super excited, the city manager said. Give me the contact number, and I dropped it off, we, I showed them what proposals they had developed for us as Ogumaw County, I said, I don't know, you know. But I showed the differential of what, you know, we were currently paying versus what Mesa was gonna be. He, as I was walking out the door, he had the phone number in his hand, was dialing the phone. So. That's it, oh, negotiations, we've been, negotiations, we met today with the court unit, we're meeting tomorrow with the corrections unit, so. Um. I'm quite confident in the direction those two are going.
Commissioner Scott?
I attended, well, four township meetings last week. Uh, they, they, uh, vary from light issues to some dipsy moth issues to snow plowing. Uh, nothing really out of the ordinary. Uh, airport meeting was last week, we're looking, uh. To replace a pickup truck, plow truck that's, uh, that's twenty years old that we use. Um. I think, uh, talked to Parks and Rec there, went to that meeting, and negotiations, of course, has been hot and heavy, we've. Been doing a lot of negotiation meetings over the last few weeks. Um. What was that look for, about the truck?
No, no, the truck's fine, um, they're also gonna have some instructional training on the airport, on the airstrip, or, not at the airstrip, but. Over by the, um, buildings there. A driver, driver's course for, uh.
Oh, I like you talk, but, yeah. Um, that's, that's, uh, it's been pretty busy month so far. So, thank you.
Commissioner Ron?
Uh, met with Parks and Rec, um, we did get the card today from, uh, Karen, so, uh, now they have the. A card that I'll take care of, so that they can order supplies, um, had no other meetings other than that.
The, um, they also got that other thing taken care of too. Um. Something to do with the audit for the parks, Parks and Rec there. Hmm, what was that about?
Organizing receipt book?
No, it was something we had to get done.
Audit?
Through the state.
Oh, that was the deer.
Oh, the deer, the park, for the. Yeah, yeah, that was your claim, so, yep, yep.
And there, and then, when did they say they were gonna come into the audit, did they say anything about that yet?
When more, I, I think they come in, they audit, they start.
Our regular financial audit, are you referring to, or are you talking about a state audit for the deer park?
I think when they, when they actually.
The license, wasn't it, licensing had expired?
Well, I think they inspect the park, don't they?
Uh, USDA will come in periodically and check the.
Yeah, there's not a schedule for that.
The DNR really doesn't, uh, it's, do, it's, they're, they don't really do an inspection, they ask for your, a head count and stuff like that. Uh, at licensed time. Uh, but it's USDA that'll come in, Department of Agriculture will come in and take a look.
But there was, there was a bunch of emails throughout this, this week, you were, you were attached to those. Um, it sounds like that issue's been resolved, it was related to the deer park.
Right.
Yeah, it was a license, the license had laps.
And Bill helped us out with that.
And Mr. Griffin was involved, and, yes, so that's all totally resolved now, correct? Okay.
Money was sent, but it gets treasury first, and then fin, finally he said yes, it got there.
Yeah, cool.
And I did give them my email, so if there's renewal next year, I will get it immediately, and we'll get a process.
That issue's been resolved, because I think we were all CC'd on that.
Yeah, yeah. Um, other than that, I also had, uh, airport with Craig, uh, I said the plow, plow truck. Um, request for bids on that, and then, uh, there happens to be instructional training for, um, law enforcement, um, agencies. I don't know what the date is, but, uh, they're gonna do that over there by the buildings, I believe. Um, and then, um. I also, um, had correspondence with Westbridge Township, and, um, it sounds like they got some, uh, pretty big, uh. Things on the horizon there, uh, it's like they, I, I, I believe they already approved it, I, I think I could talk about it. But, uh, they're investing in a marijuana, um, type facility, retail facility, or maybe even two of them, so.
Is that it?
That's it.
Um, I attended the Village of Prescott, uh, there are some light issues there, some road issues, a covert issue. I'm not really sure what they're gonna do with that park there yet, because of that vandalism that, that took place. Um, I attended Mills Township, um, some light issues, uh, assessor, they did agree on a contract to continue with their current assessor. Um, the fire department, I believe, Sheriff, you reported they're having, uh, you're having an open house that the Mills Township Fire Department is.
October second, it's, uh, we're gonna dedicate a memorial Saturday at noon.
So if you guys are out there, stop in and take a look at that, it's pretty neat.
It's really sharp, and who did that was firefighters, all that together, all of that was donated by people.
Who bu, who built it?
Pardon me?
Who, who lit, who, who built it?
We did, the fire department, we put that all together, um, Dan David, he did all the blocks for us, Brick, and, uh. Yeah, it came together really, really well, I'm really proud of it.
And didn't Casey do some work there?
Casey did the stamp, he donated that, yeah, we, we got a whole list of people that donated, so we're gonna announce that at our.
If you guys are out there, stop and take a look, it's, uh.
They, um, updated your front sign there too.
Yeah.
It is a little hard to read, but I'm typically driving a little fast, so. Uh, EDC meeting was Monday, um, I did listen by Zoom, because it was, they met in Rose City, um, it changed from the farmer's market because of weather into the, uh. I don't remember, a building in Rose City anyways, um. The Rose City Council there has got some, uh, things that they announced with some abandoned buildings and, um. In the city there itself, they talked a little bit about the splash pad, um. EDC is, uh, growing, doing well, um, expanding, uh, doing an amazing job, so. I think that's all that I attended this, uh, in the past, since our previous meeting.
Can I, Brad, can I, can I ask Brad something?
Please.
The, was that the Westbridge Township DDA, right? Just doing that, because I was a township board member, and there was absolutely no discussion.
Yeah, this was Westbridge Township DDA.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Item fourteen, uh, general public comment, uh, those rules that I, I read earlier do apply to this, so is there any general public comment? Come on up. Yeah.
Read the instructions, I can talk about anything that's not on the agenda.
Correct.
Good, I have something to talk about that's not on the agenda. And Karen, do you know who was on the redistricting committee for this county as far as redistributing for commissioners?
Um, yes, our clerk, our treasurer.
Just my one.
Ladonna.
By statute, we have to serve.
A democratic individual from the Democratic Party, Anna, pardon me?
The chair of each.
Anna what?
Speak, speak up.
The chair of the Democratic Party and the chair of the Republican Party, so it's Ken Kish and Dwight McIntyre.
Did I miss anybody?
Nope, just five.
So there's five, correct?
Okay. Well, I, I had lunch today with, uh, someone that was from a township board, and, uh, I looked at this, and it's like, um. Where, is it district two that has six, six, uh. Six townships now? District two?
I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I've seen it, but I don't know what you mean.
So, so Mills Township is in a district by itself, has one, so they got one meeting to go to. Two township, that's all they've got, so they should probably get a lot of committees, because they've only got one other meeting to go to besides these meetings. But, uh, in a way it's. Distributed now, one of you that is sitting there tonight will not be here after next election. Because you'll be running against each other if, if, if you run. And, um. I just don't see where the county. Population has redistributed that much, or there'd be such significant changes to the districts. Does not make sense to me, does not make sense to the person I was having lunch with today. Um, it, it just doesn't make, and West Branch Township is a big township, um, and they're split. But Mills Township is a big township, and, and, and they're not split, I, I guess I don't understand, I don't understand. How that happened, and it does not make any sense to me, nor does it make any sense to a lot of people.
Now, there's a meeting, I'm sorry, go ahead, there's a meeting this week, correct?
Twenty eighth.
That's this week, so is, is.
Two PM. Next week, there's, there's been.
Twenty eight?
Two.
No, no, September twenty.
There's been two public meetings. Um, everybody was. In.
I didn't know.
It's supposed to be Wednesday, it was just on the.
Yeah, but it was announced here at this meeting, at least twice.
Say what, please?
It was, it was talked about in the county board commissioners meeting, we were told about it at least two different times.
So I didn't know.
Posted on the county.
So what happens on the twenty eighth, is, is there?
Just finalizing.
Yeah, finalizing the plan, um.
Plan's already been selected, it's approval of four minutes, just to finish.
So basically, the way it is right now is what it's gonna stand.
The board voted unanimously at the redistricting meeting to approve a map, two were presented, one was selected and approved.
If the, if people have questions about that, is there, um, information to back up these decisions from the census that the bureau is, is.
Okay, you've brought to you, I mean, just to tell them a little bit about.
Tell them about, tell them about the computer program.
You, yeah.
By statute, we were required to create redistributing maps, the, the task was assigned to the Board of Repportionment. We were given software from the state of Michigan to use to create redistributing maps. It had required criteria to meet to create the maps. Very, uh, un-user friendly, it was all done by census blocks, all of the information from the census was populated in the maps for us to utilize. And you had to, um, meet the requirements of the state to validate your map and have it qualify as a. Um, meeting the criteria map. Very, very difficult to use, very difficult to. Create the equalized population within each district. Um, two maps were created and submitted for voting, one map had two splits, it split both of the cities. And the other map split one township. The criteria, the cri, yup, and it was split at State Road for a clean line, uh, popular road that everyone knows that we split in that area.
And fifty-five was a good road.
And, but you had to go by numbers, Brenda, and you had to qualify the map by the guidelines to validate your map, and then you had all the criteria on the side. As you met the criteria, it went from red to green, very difficult because of how the census blocks move. And, yes, um, I think one of the maps had six areas.
Both of them had, both of them had six, which is not any different.
But Ron's got, no.
Yours now.
Yes, six now. You have five?
You have five?
I have four townships in the city.
I have four.
Right.
And the other one's six.
I have four.
Again, it was, it was not something that we just said, oh, I think I'll just do this, you had, it was difficult, you had to meet criteria, and.
I think there were four different, four different criteria we had.
We had to meet to qualify and validate.
Can I talk to you about that?
In the, the.
Criteria?
The current map, the current district map did not meet the criteria.
Yeah. Yeah.
So she hears.
Brandon, yeah, they plugged in the current map, the way the districts are now, it wasn't valid. The state of Michigan said that's not a valid plan.
The numbers.
The way the computers generates to say yes, this is valid, it said, no, it's not valid. So they had to change somehow.
Well, I thi, I think to some people, the way, the way it came out is that there was a, a, a deliberate, and, and we looked at it when we said, hmm, that was all by itself, and then. Um, where different people lived in different districts, it's like.
I can tell you a hundred percent, nothing was done deliberately, except for. To follow the four pieces of.
What the appearances are. It appears that specific people, you wanted to, wanted to get rid of, that's what this appears like.
Brenda, Brenda, hold on, hold on, so our three minutes is up, I appreciate your time, can you meet with them, and?
He said I can have his three minutes.
You can have your three minutes too.
I thank you, I thank you, is there any other, thank you, is there any other public comment? But, hold, hold on. Is there any other public comment? Any public comment on the phone? Mr. Probug, did you?
Uh, yes, I'd like, uh, Commissioner Serbrook to call me, please.
I will do that, sir.
Five, three, four.
I, I still got your number in my phone.
Is there any, any other?
Call me.
Yep, I will.
Any other public comment?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Bye.
Motion adjourn, meeting adjourned.